Okay, we're going to restart the meeting now at 8:35 PM.
Miles.
Miles, can you please close the doors? Okay, we're going to start with the minutes. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 117, accepting the minutes, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Yancey, can I have a roll call?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Okay. So now we're going to have Ordinance 25-14. We're going to have a public hearing. This is an ordinance by the City Council amending the City of Inglewood Code of Ordinances to repeal Chapter 222 in its entirety and to re-adopt a new 222 to adopt flood hazard maps, designate a floodplain administrator, and providing for severability and effective date. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
A public hearing before the motion? Okay, actually, we're going to have the public hearing first. I'm just going to ask that Mr. Hoffman say a couple of words about this before we start the public hearing.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is in reference to the latest update from FEMA. So FEMA has released new flood maps and updated guidelines. So these are the updated guidelines. Once this ordinance is adopted, it will allow the residents of Inglewood to obtain flood insurance. So at the moment, we need to have this ordinance adopted so that our residents are able to obtain flood insurance. That's the gist for this.
Thank you. The public hearing on this ordinance is now open. Anyone who desires to be heard or to ask questions concerning this ordinance will be heard at this time. Okay. I'm now going to close the public hearing for this ordinance. Can I have a motion that the ordinance 25— Oh, you want to speak? Okay, come on up. Sorry, come on up.
Not only that, but discussion.
Please state your name, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Raymond Diaz Foray, Shannon Court. Question, designate a floodplain administrator. Is that an existing person or is it a new hire? And also, how does this, these new flood maps—I'm asking, didn't we have any now at the present time where people are experiencing flood situations? Have they been—do we have these maps? And the maps that are now from FEMA, are they expanding those areas? And how are you going to use those maps for our affordable housing? Well, we ask that new housing should not be built on those flooded areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the public wish to comment? I'm now going to close the public hearing for this ordinance. Can I have a motion that ordinance 2514 be adopted?
As for discussion prior to—
Could I have a motion that this be adopted?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Bob, do you want to answer Mr. Diaz's questions, please?
Certainly. The floodplain administrator is the city engineer, so this is not a new position, but this is part of his duties. Also, the city has had no input into the FEMA flood maps. That's something that's done by the federal government. But this ordinance is something that's necessary so that all of our residents will be able to obtain flood insurance based on the new FEMA maps. So the city engineer will be able to review the maps that have been released from FEMA and look at them. But again, this is a requirement so that all of our residents are able to obtain the flood insurance that they require.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the governing body? Councilman Wilson?
My concern is that a document of this magnitude appears to be highlighted and/or not edited for our particular town. And I understand that this may be a statewide or county-wide situation, but something of this magnitude where we're putting our residents and insurance companies in jeopardy, I would hope that we would amend this document so that there are no highlighted markouts or blackouts on Page 11, 26, Page 28. It could be a concern for us, for our residents, and I just want to bring attention to that as we've already adopted such a document.
Thank you. Any other comments from the governing body? Yancey, can I have a roll call, please? Oh, Angela, did you—Councilwoman David? Go ahead. Do you have a comment?
Go ahead.
No, basically, I said we were doing—we're not doing updates or comments, right, from the governing body, are we?
We're doing comments on Ordinance Number 25-14 right now, from the governing body.
Thank you, Yancey. No comment.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Okay, now we have Ordinance 2515, an ordinance regulating the use of public and private sewers and drains, private wastewater disposal, the installation and connection of building sewers, and the discharge of water and waste into the public sewer system, and providing penalties for violation thereof. Mr. Burkin, do you want to say a couple of words about this, please?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, this is—the rules and regs for the utilization of—for the discharge of water and wastewater to the Bergen County Utilities Authority is the—that's the county wastewater treatment facility that's located in Little Ferry, New Jersey. All the wastewater that's generated in 48 municipalities throughout Bergen County do end up at the BCUA. It's about 75 million gallons or 80 million gallons a day that is treated and disposed of into the Hackensack River. These rules and regs were promulgated in 2014. The city did have an obligation to codify the rules and regs into the city as an ordinance. We've been using a resolution in the past which expires after one year. This will codify these rules and regs for the city utilization of the BCUA sewers and also our local sewers. It also regulates—it regulates pollutant introduction into the sewers. It regulates the connections to the sewers locally. It provides an enforcement mechanism for the discharge of pollutants into the sewer system, and it provides for the administration of fees and other enforcement modalities with regard to industrial wastes that may be contributed. So what this does is it just provides that relationship between the city and the county for the discharge and for the treatment of water and wastewater, and whether it be sanitary or storm waters as well.
Thank you. The public hearing on this ordinance is now open. Anyone who desires to be heard or to ask questions concerning this ordinance will be heard at this time. Please step up to the mic. Okay, being that nobody stepped up to the mic, I'm now closing the public hearing for this ordinance. Can I have a motion that ordinance 2515 be adopted?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the governing body? Yancey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Now we have introductions for first reading. We have three, and then there's one that we're going to add afterwards. The first one is Ordinance 25— And we've changed the titles of the ordinance, so I'm going to read the new titles. 2516 is an ordinance of the City of Inglewood adding Section 191-12D, regulating the use of city-owned tennis and pickleball courts. Can I have a motion that this ordinance pass on first reading and be published once by title only in the record?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And the public—okay, and any discussion from the governing body on this ordinance? Okay, the public—can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Council President Wasatski?
Yes, and the public hearing for this will be on April 1st.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now we have Ordinance 25-17. This is an ordinance establishing Chapter 155 Cannabis Sales Unregulated of the City Code for the City of Inglewood relating to the prohibition of the sale and purchase of unlicensed or unregulated THC products. Can I have a motion? That the ordinance pass on first reading?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the governing body? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Council President Wasatski?
Yes. And the public hearing for that ordinance will be on April 1st as well. Okay. Now I have— I have Ordinance Number 25-18. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 191 of the Code of the City of Inglewood entitled Fee Schedule. Can I have a motion that the ordinance— Oh.
Point of clarification I wanted to make, the initial draft of this ordinance had set the fine at $500. However, after we got input from the Police Department, the recommendation is that it be changed to $250 for the first violation and $500 for any subsequent violations.
Okay.
That's what actually would be introduced, and I will get Yancey to that corrected language tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So moved with the discussed changes.
Okay, can I have a second, please? I'll second it. Any discussion from the governing body? Yancey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Now I need—we want to introduce Ordinance 2519. We need the consent of everybody from the City Council to introduce Ordinance 2519. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease between the City of Inglewood and the Bergen Family Center, and that's for the parking lot across the street from the Bergen Family Center. Do you want to—do we take a roll call? Can I have a motion to—
I move that we add Ordinance 2519 to tonight's agenda for first reading.
I'll second that we add it to the agenda tonight for first reading. Any discussion from the governing body? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David? Councilwoman David?
Calling Yancey, I'm sorry, yes, I was muted, my mistake.
Thank you. Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Council President Wasatski?
Yes. And now that we've added it, I need a motion that we pass the ordinance on first reading. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion from the governing body? Can I have a roll call, please, Yancey?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Council President Wasatski?
Yes.
And this is also for a public hearing on April 1st.
And the public hearing is on April 1st. Okay, now we have resolutions for the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that anybody on the council would like to pull out?
I seem to have lost the public session for the consent agenda. We need to add that back on here.
Well, if you didn't—
It's the norm. Yeah. Where did it go?
Okay, does— You—I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you please repeat that?
119 and 122.
Do you want us to pull it out for a separate vote, or just for—do you have a question on it?
We can have discussion in regards to those.
I don't hear you. Okay, we're going to pull that out for a separate discussion. Anything other than 119? Okay.
Yes, 122.
Oh, you asked for—I can't hear. I don't know why, I'm not hearing. So you want to pull out 122, not 119? Oh, both 119 and 122. Okay. Okay, can I have a motion that we introduce resolutions on the consent agenda 118, 120, 121, 123, 124, 125, and 126?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the governing body on those resolutions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Can I have a motion that we introduce Resolution 119, Resolution Rejecting Bid Submittal in Response to Landscaping Bid Services, Bid Number 25-06?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Just so we get a clear look at this and so we explain to the public what exactly this is. I don't know if our city manager would like to speak to that, or if it—you, as the president, would like to speak to that.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Council President. What this is, is this is a—this bid had a fatal flaw in it, so it's—we're asking the governing body to reject it at this time. The city went out to bid for landscaping services, for park maintenance, and for easement maintenance, so that the—the goal was to see what the cost would be with the option of being able to transfer some of our DPW staff to stormwater management. And we had the bid opening last week. We're evaluating the bids that were submitted that are valid, but this bid had a fatal flaw in it, so that's why we're asking that it be rejected. And we'll be evaluating those bids that are still valid, and the governing body has 60 days to award or to reject the bids once they've been reviewed.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate it.
Any other comments from the governing body? Yancey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
You want me to have—it's comment time, right?
No, we're on roll call.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'm sorry, Yancey, thank you, yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Can I have a motion that we introduce Resolution 122, awarding contract in the amount of 688,984 grand funded to McCormick Taylor for preliminary and final design and construction engineering services in connection with the Inglewood City ADA Improvement Project and NJDOT Local Aid Design Assistance Program.
So moved. Second.
And discussion? Councilman Wilson?
This seems to be a complex package, and it covers several different areas within our city. And it also includes our youth in regards to safe route. So if we could have a quick synopsis, because some of this is a paste in clip or print, if you will. And so I just want to know that how we tailor this to our existing safe route and some of our existing issues that we already have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoffman, do you want to respond, please?
Certainly. This is actually an exciting resolution. The resolution is a federal government mouthful, but basically, this is—this authorizes the design for safe routes to schools, and the key area is going to be Tenafly Road, basically from the World War I Memorial to McLeod School. There's a couple of other locations that are included. This is a—this is a 100% reimbursement grant or fully funded grant. Sorry about that, I thought that was on silent. It's in three phases, so the first phase is the preliminary designing or the preliminary engineering for this, and that's for $305,920.12. The city must select engineering firms that have been pre-qualified by the federal government, and McCormick Taylor has been pre-qualified and is being recommended by our engineer, our city engineer, Mr. Volsey. So that's what this first phase is for. The second phase is for final design, and then the third phase is for construction inspections or construction consultation. So that's what this is about.
That includes stormwater management?
No, this is about ADA curb cuts, and this is about designing safe routes to schools. There will be a component for that, but the main focus is to make sure that children and pedestrians are safe as they're walking on sidewalks and as they're crossing streets.
Yeah, that's what threw me off, because it—on Page 7, Number 11, Prepared Preliminary Drainage Designs, and it says stormwater management.
Yes, that's for the intersections.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear, because we're having a lot of conversation in regards to stormwater management, and I just wanted that pointed out.
Any other discussion from the governing body? Yancey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Discussion on this topic, no.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You said discussion on a specific topic, right? I said no. No discussion.
So we're voting on Resolution Number 122.
Hold on, I'm going to vote for no. One minute, Yancey. Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Council President Wasatski?
Yes. I now need a motion that we carry Resolution 127 to March 24th, which has authorized the city to take enforcement action against 37 Bennett Road. Can I have a motion that we carry this to March 24th?
I move that we table it and carry it to March 24th.
We're just carrying—
We're just carrying it?
Neither.
Okay. So we'll carry it to March 24th.
My second.
Okay, any discussion from the governing body? Oh, no discussion when we table—yeah. Yancey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Now we have Resolution 128, Approved Payment of Bills and Claims. Whereas the Chief Financial Officer has certified and submitted a consolidated bill and claim list for payment as well as a consolidated list of prepaid items, the prepaid items include emergency payments, wire transfers, and regularly scheduled monthly payments that are paid between bills and claim list dates. And whereas all bills and claims listed here with have been encumbered and sufficient funds are available for payment, and whereas required signatures have all been obtained, and each voucher on the attached list, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Inglewood that the bills and claims on the submitted list are hereby approved for payment to the total of $2,149,641.61. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion from the governing body? Yancey, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman David?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenzweig?
Yes.
Councilman Tokayer?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Council President Wasatski?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Mayor Wiles, would you like to start the communications from the governing body, please?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. Congratulations again to our newly minted Sergeant Anthony Gallo and his beautiful family. What a beautiful picture it was with his children. Ladies and gentlemen, it's Women's History Month. As we celebrate this in March, I want to thank the many individuals and organizations bringing us tremendous programming, celebrating the many accomplishments of women, and the critical role they play in all of our lives. As a special treat, legendary performer Gloria Gaynor paid a visit to our city as an honorary guest speaker at Bergen Pack's annual spring luncheon today. We have seen a variety of historical and educational programs, such as Mothers of Invention at Inglewood Public Library highlighting women innovators throughout history, Latina's Empowered Program at the Women's Rights Information Center, and other community partners that have brought us additional resources, such as free prom dresses, shoes, accessories, events sponsored by the Bergen Community College and the Women's Rights Information Center coming up on April 2nd and 3rd, The Power of Her Feminine Wellness Seminar coming up on March 30th at Closets for Her, and many more. Please check our websites and social media for upcoming events, such as Women's Rights Information Center Book Fair and Author Showcase on March 27, Women's Diversity Book Club, that means monthly, at the library at their next meeting on March 25th, and many more happenings in this month and throughout the year. Thank you to everyone for contributing to this meaningful memory. Inglewood Night Market, we are proud to announce that the Night Market received the Best of Bergen Special Town Event Award from 201 magazine. The Night Market was an extremely well-attended event held this past summer as part of our city's 125th anniversary celebration. It drew thousands of visitors to our downtown, an amazing business and residential experience, vendors, music, and other activities. I want to thank our city manager for his guidance, as well as our council, city employees, business holders, community partners, such as Inglewood Health, TH Irwin, and TH Irwin Experience for making this such a successful event for our city. Congratulations to our good friend Warren Geller, CEO of Inglewood Health, for being named one of 2025 Great Leaders in Healthcare by Becker's Hospital Review. Warren and Inglewood Health have been tremendous assets for our community, helping us navigate the difficulties of COVID and providing exemplary service across the board, as well as consistently supporting other important community programs. Spring Break Mini Camp at McKay, we're pleased to offer an exciting opportunity for local kids for Mini Camp McKay coming up from April 14 to 17. Kids ages 6 to 14 can participate in a number of field trips and activities daily from 8:30 to 5:30. Reduced rates are available for Inglewood residents. Please contact the Inglewood Rec Department in order to sign up. And of course, I do my weekly rendition on Coffee with the Mayor every Friday at 11:00 on the library's Facebook page. If you'd like to join and participate, we'd be honored to have you. And congratulations to all the honorees, particularly our police chief and our deputy chief, who will be honored this Thursday evening at Inglewood's Rotary, the exemplars of service above self. Thank you.
Councilwoman David?
For the Inglewood Public Schools—
For the Inglewood Public School District. On February 27th, Council President Luis Lisa Wasatsky and I attended a special event celebrating the academic achievements of our students in the Inglewood Public School District. It has been many years since we've been seeing high numbers in ELA and math. I felt proud to be part of the celebration and honored to serve as a board member for, well, elected as a board member for three charities. I also had the pleasure of voting for Dr. Hazleton as our superintendent, and she has made us proud. Also, nine low-income districts, including ours, have improved their performance in reading and math going above pre-pandemic, pandemic levels. This is part of the recent education recovery scoreboard. And, you know, I just feel proud of the Inglewood Public School District. And you know what, thank you, thank you, thank you. And Mariah, you're making us proud in the Inglewood Public School District. And kudos to all, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Rosenzweig?
Hi, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Again, congratulations to Sergeant Gallo, and a congratulations to Mariah School on their 60th anniversary. Also, since our last meeting, it's been five years now since worldwide pandemic had been announced in response to the SARS-CoVid virus. And it's time of a tremendous loss, pretty much for everyone. And I wanna acknowledge that, that time. Not sure exactly what lessons we've learned, but hopefully we'll be better prepared if and when our health is under attack again. And I'd like to wish a No Ruzmabarak for everyone who's celebrating the Persian New Year. Thank you very much.
Councilman Tokayer?
Thank you. I have nothing to say at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, good evening. As, as you know, we are in the budget seizing, and we're wrapping up on the master plan. And I, I can't tell you that, how important your input is. And if in fact that you do have issues or suggestions, it's never too late to come to City Hall, speak to the mayor, speak to your councilperson. But we need for you to be involved. That's the only way we can correct these wrongs that a lot of people like to complain after the fact. So please, be a part of your government. Be a part of your community. And most of all, be a part of the city to be improved. So I look forward to hearing from you guys and your thoughts on how we can make our city better, how we can come together as a community, as a city, and how we can beautify it and look out for our age-friendly people. So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Again, I, I wanna wish a congratulations to Sergeant Gallo. I wanna wish a congratulations to the Mariah School. And I do wanna wish a congratulations to the Inglewood Public School. I did attend the academic celebration, as Councilwoman David mentioned, a few weeks ago. And it was great to celebrate with the public school. And very, very, very pleased with their achievements. And it was a wonderful celebration. Mr. Hoffman, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Council President. Mayor, I just wanna thank you for those wonderful words about Inglewood Night. That was a great event. We're looking forward to our second Inglewood Night coming up this July. And this was a wonderful achievement. And again, thank you to all who participated in it, the 5,200 residents that attended or visitors. But thank you to, to our staff, particularly to our, my assistant Catherine Melendez, our DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and as you mentioned, TH, but all those that, that took part in the planning. It was, it was a joyful event. I also wanted to wish everybody a happy birthday, because yesterday was our 126th birthday. Inglewood was founded in 1899 on St. Patrick's Day on March 17th. Council, Councilman Wilson has said that he will, he will learn how to dance Irish step dancing for next year, so we're looking forward to that. But thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. I'm now gonna open the meeting to the public. Speakers are asked to step up to the microphone. And to give your name, you have three minutes to speak. Anyone who wishes to speak, please step up to the microphone now.
Hello, Raymond Diaz, 408 Shannon Court. You were discussing ordinances 2519 and 2518. I don't know what you were talking about. Nobody gave an explanation, so I guess it's this, there's gonna be a second hearing on these ordinances? Okay. I wanted to comment on last meeting we had, Ms. Wasatsky. You said that Inglewood was one of the 26 municipalities who voted no against the Affordable? All right, just to clarify, you said something at the end of the meeting that I just didn't understand. But I thought I, I heard you say that we were one of 26 that are gonna be sued by the developers?
Yeah, I'll explain it after.
Okay, so here's my confusion, because I thought that Burgess Associates was gonna represent us with, with the state? Or is it the consumer, the people who are in charge of it now, Consumer Affairs or something? And Fair Housing? That they decided that they, they're technically what they call a intervener between us and the, and the state? And they were willing to look at our plan to see if we can make some changes? So that's what I'm interested, are we doing that? Because by just hearing the statement that we said no, it's almost like we're going nowhere. All right, so perhaps you can clarify that? All right, thank you.
Anybody else in the public have any comments?
Good evening, everyone. Pardon? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ava Radigan, 64 in that place. I haven't been here in a while, so I just have a few follow-up questions to some issues. So what, what are some of the maintenance strategies for the flooding? Especially that we're approaching April, and April tends to bring showers. So what collaboration have been done with the state and county in regards to Crystal Lake in terms of the dredging? I haven't heard much of that. Also, Route 4 and Grand Avenue with the flooding. There's also Broad and Sheffield as well, and also regular maintenance of the drains and catch basins. And this is something that I've brought up before at city council meetings. And this is the left-hand turn off of Brookside onto Grand Avenue, which is a safety issue. I've seen countless buses, 18-wheeler trucks, cars, you name it. I would like police presence in that area to start ticketing, because this has been going on for quite a while. I don't know if Sergeant really is here. Yes, if someone could really address that, that's an issue. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samuel Lee, 40 Bennett Road. I heard the address of 37 Bennett Road being kicked around a little bit. Trying to find out what that's about.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anyone else in the public wish to speak? Okay. I'm now gonna close the public session. Okay, I'm gonna just start with the affordable housing? Okay. So there's a strict, the affordable housing has a timeline that we have to follow, that every municipality in, in the state of New Jersey has to follow. And by the end of January, we were given a number in October. And we had till the end of January to either accept this affordable housing number or to, or do our own calculations. We do our own calculations and provide another number. And that's what we did. Our, we, Burgess Associates did the calculations, and, and our experts said that we were about 50 units, we owed about 50 units less than we were given. So we, we passed a resolution in January with a new number, and it, and it gets sent back. And 159 municipalities in the state of New Jersey, so that's the number, 159, said that they had a different number. They, they reported a different number. So now what happens is we're waiting for a settlement hearing, and, and, and we have the, the, we have, we will hear back by the end of March, whether our number, so we were sued, 100, so 159 municipalities gave a different number. And then a developers' group sued all 159 municipalities. And so now we're waiting for a settlement session, and we have until March, the end of March 31st to get a new number. It, or, or they'll accept our regular number. So that's, that's all it is. What we're, what, I will talk about affordable housing more at the next council session. I'll discuss it, I'll discuss it under discussion items, because by then, by April 1st, we'll have heard back from the court whether or not they accepted our number or not. So I'll update it then. In terms of the traffic issue, in terms of the traffic issue, I just, I just wanted to point out that we do, the Traffic Advisory Committee who, that has not been meeting, is going to start meeting quarterly. And I believe they have a meeting can-
Next week on Wednesday.
-next week on Wednesday. Can you just provide the information? It's on Zoom.
Yeah, that'll be made public soon.
It'll be made, it'll be, it'll be on the website. Is that, it'll be on the website. So that would be a good place to bring up the area. What?
I said I have photos, I have proof.
Okay, good. Okay. So that's the second, that's the traffic issue. Let's see. The Route 4 Grand Avenue flooding, that, that's not recent. That's the old flooding, and that was a blockage that was, that was fixed. Is that right? We haven't had flooding there recently.
No, correct, Council President. I also have an update about Crystal Lake.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Do you like me to give?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks. So the, the New Jersey Turnpike Authority is now mobilizing, and they're going to be, they're gonna, going to be removing stumps and then other, other impediments along the easement behind that place. They're also gonna be doing some work under the easement that, that goes behind that place. And there'll be some work that'll be done on Cr, at Crystal Lake. So, but you, you might see some activity there. They've also been doing some, some desilting and desnagging or removing sediment along Route 4. So you might, you might have seen some, some work along the, along the Turnpike, the Turnpike area, and also, you know, as, as it connects to Route 4. So the Turnpike Authority is starting to step up, and they've been interacting with the city, and they're, they're, you know, they're doing some work, and they'll be doing some more work in the future. And again, under, when we had the flooding on Grand Avenue, it turned out that it was a, a, either a railroad tie or a piece of the retaining wall from, from the highway that, that somehow got into the, got into the, got into the underground system. And it literally had to be taken out, but we were able to TV it. And we saw the line, and it was blocking, it was blocking the drainage line on an angle. And it's now been removed, and since it's been removed, there's been no flooding.
And that was the state's responsibility? And the state came and they, they took care of it?
They, they did, but it was, you know, kudos to our DPW, because they were-
And kudos to our DPW.
Because they were, they were out, they, you know, they were out blocking the area after the police called, and they were the ones that did the preliminary investigation and helped to point the state and others in the right direction.
Thank you. And Mr. Bailey, will you make a comment on the Bennett Road?
Sure. As you may recall, about 20 years ago, the city entered into a land exchange agreement with respect to the Shiloh Lodge to essentially swap lands. The city owned property on West Forest Avenue. The Lodge owned 37 Bennett Road. The intention, as I understand it at that time, was to do the exchange and that the Lodge would then move to the West Forest property, which is vacant, they'd have to build a Lodge. It's been several years. Obviously, the Lodge has never been built. We've been in discussions with the Lodge about undoing that exchange essentially, because, you know, they apparently wanna stay at 37 Bennett Road. But in order to do that, we need to get the West Forest property back. So that, that's the purpose of that. We've been having discussions, and hopefully, the reason that most resolution was tabled because we hopefully made some progress this afternoon that can resolve it and get that done with.
Thank you. So, um, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.